Okay, we're calling the meeting to order of September 23rd, 2021, and I ask that you all rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. Trustee Dooley, please call the roll.
Trustee Bartlett's absent, excused. Trustee Sherakuri?
Present.
Trustee Crawford?
Here.
I'm present. Trustee Mishner?
Present, thank you.
Trustee Wood?
Here.
And Trustee Hughes, absent, excused.
Okay. Are there any additions to the agenda? Does anyone have any additions? Okay, I'm adding an item, number four. Consideration by the Library Board to engage Dr. Lee Meadows for additional board consulting work.
Will that go for matters for board action?
Pardon?
Matters for board action.
Yes, yeah, number four. Okay, seeing no further additions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second, all right, Sherakuri, second. Secretary Dooley, oh, discussion, any discussion about it? No? Okay, Secretary Dooley, please call the roll.
I apologize, I have one discussion point.
Okay.
Is it possible, if we can also, in addition to Lee Meadows, can we also consider Jay Marks? Just because he's also done a lot of consulting with us?
The only reason I chose Lee Meadows and gave you the information was because we've started with him with the strategic planning and he has had a sense of meeting the members so far when you had your event in June. So I feel like we started the seed, but I'm-
Yeah, I just wanted to see if we can-
We had discussion with him and he made recommendations to us, so that's why I'm making that motion. I mean, I'll be doing it appropriately at the appropriate time, so. Any other, okay, any other ends? All right, seeing, seeing none, Secretary Dooley, please call the roll.
Trustee Sherakuri?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley, I'm yes. Trustee Mishner?
Yep, and that's just to make sure that it's up for vote. Is that what I'm hearing correctly?
Yes, the, this is the addition-
Approval of the agenda, right?
Approval of the agenda items.
Right, for this, for this item to be a matter for board action?
Yes.
Okay.
Number four.
Okay. Aye.
Aye, okay. Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Okay, and Trustee you and Trustee Bartlett are absent.
Okay. Are there any removals from the two items on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
I so move.
Okay, Sherakuri, second? I'll make the second. Okay, are there, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Secretary Dooley, please call the roll.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
I vote yes. Trust, uh, trust, Trustee Dooley. Trustee Mishner?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
And Trustee Sherakuri?
Yes.
Okay. All right, there are no presentations this evening. The first audience participation under public comment in order to hear all citizens' comments at a reasonable hour, the Library Board requests that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-and-answer session, however, it's an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the Library Board. I will remind the audience that remarks should be limited to those pertaining to the board business and inappropriate, profane, vulgar, or abusive language and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Citizens must state their first, last name and address. So, does anyone wish to come forward at this time? Okay, seeing none. You'll see by your packet, moving on, that the student representative report, we will be having two new members, student members, that will be coming to our meeting beginning in October, I believe it is, right?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, we are now at the President's Report. I was very pleased to see the results of the 2020 City of Novi National Research Center survey that indicated a 96% favorable rating of Novi library services and programs, which I thought that was pretty amazing. This doesn't happen by accident, just thought I'd remind everybody, I think you all know, and I would like to commend staff and volunteers for their dedication and their hard work. So a survey rating, I also noticed, was recognized that Novi has greater social tolerance and enhanced enjoyment of the community. Respondents indicated with a score of 86% that the city values and respects residents from diverse backgrounds. And in the area of inclusivity, a feeling of belonging and engagement, the city rated very high with a score of 99% feeling that Novi is a great place to raise children. Of course, we will continue, we are going to focus and be committed to improving and creating enhanced programming in the areas of diversity, equity, and inclusion. But this data does confirm that we are heading in the right direction. On page 23, you will find the Board Committee chart indicating the appointment of Trustee Dooley to HR, and I want to thank her for accepting this appointment without any argument or anything, she was really wonderful about it. So, there are no other changes in committees at this time, however, we have all received a petition from a Northville Novi organization asking for the removal of one member of the DEI committee. I am very aware of perpetual conflict on this committee since its beginning in 2020. There's also been a history of contentious behavior among some members of the board. So in order to find a way to move forward, I've had communications from and with staff, board members, and community members relating to the problems on the committee and board. Problems that were going on well before our latest three members were appointed. A wise person once said that what you focus on expands. I am confident that if I focused on finding negative or controversial statements or shared posts from any person in this room or any person on any other committee or commission in the city, I would have no problem in finding something disagreeable or something that would offend me, actually. So I don't intend to investigate each trustee's background, nor will I ever use my limited time to follow each trustee's Facebook post. How would that improve our library or the city of Novi? Trustees appointed to this board are professionals in a variety of fields, several owning their own businesses and were selected due to their own expertise and a history of involvement. This continuing conflict has got to stop because it's affecting staff morale, it's creating anxiety among board members and staff, which affects our ability to address the important issues of this library. When we had our board retreat at the end of June, it was noted by the presenter, Dr. Lee Meadows, that this board actually does have a strong commitment to work together to solve internal and external issues that interfere with board effectiveness. There was a letter to Director Farkas from Lee Meadows, and it was in the July packet. And after his very helpful presentation, Dr. Meadows ordered three, offered three recommendations. He offered to, to have one-on-one meetings with each board member to assess their understanding of the issues, to summarize everyone's issues in an open meeting with board members, identifying and prioritizing the barriers preventing problem resolution. And, and the third recommendation was he would identify a process to implement solutions, build trust, and collaborative approaches. I actually prefer to have a committee and be on a board with members who are passionate people because they want action. Passionate people want action. We're not going to agree on every issue. For this current board to move forward, though, we've got to be open to building collaboration and trust. If any library board member is unwilling or unable to work toward cooperation, collaboration, and compromise, I urge them to contact the city clerk and tender their resignation from this board. And so that's my speech in the President's Report. But staff has been asked to review the community listening session narrative based on a point of clarification offered or provided by Sharon Trumpy, and this verbatim conversation is listed today in the packet. Based on the motion approved, this, I'm on E now, based on, as stated, based on the motion approved regarding Juneteenth at the August 26th meeting, follow-up committees, the follow-up with committees has begun. Director Farkas has asked further guidance and information pertaining to staff feedback from the HR committee, and policy is not, has not yet met. The listening section, reflection and responses that are corrected are listed in the packet. And we're going to move now to the Treasurers' Report.
I would like to, please, through the chair, I would love to be able to, to speak to everything you just shared, it was a lot. And I think it's fair to give us a chance to discuss with you.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you so much.
You have the floor.
I appreciate it, thank you. Thank you for taking out the time to write all that out, too. So, I guess I'm wondering, as a board, how we move forward? Because, and maybe, I want to make sure I heard everything correctly, and I know there's a lot there, right? You have a lot to catch up on, and I know you weren't at the last meeting either. But I myself obviously had a letter that I sent to you and that I read here as well. So it's not just the Novi Northville Racial Awareness Group that's had issues, but I personally did too. So I'm wondering, when it comes to fairness and unity, which you say we have, but I haven't felt, how, how does that get rectified for me? Because I keep hearing, we're unified, we celebrate diversity, and, and I don't see that in, in everything that, you know, we cover. And the things that I don't see it in, I do bring up, I don't just like keep it inside and leave you in the dark, right? So I guess I'm wondering, how do you, as a chair, make sure that everybody does feel, like, that's your, you've created this mission, right, this, this statement, which is really good. "Novi Public Library provides the resources and programs to support the educational, cultural, informational, recreational needs of this diverse community." Our DEI statement, "The Novi Public Library is committing to ensure that every Novi community member, library guest, board of trustee member," that's me, "library staff and volunteer are treated with dignity and respect." I don't feel that, just FYI. "Discrimination, bigotry, and racism will not be tolerated." It has been, though. "The board and staff are dedicated to promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion in order to create a comfortable, safe, and supportive library environment for all." Let me be really clear. So when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion, you know, I know everybody doesn't like when I tout my credentials, but it's important in this sense. I just got finished helping with a global search for organization for a good DEI firm. This is my wheelhouse. I, that's why I even mentioned Jay Marks, because he is amazing, he's the best. So why we wouldn't consider him? I didn't get to see his presentation. That was limited to just a few board members, for good reason, but I didn't get to see that. But I have seen him speak at the library before, I know he's very involved with Novi. I want to make sure that we're truly taking this on and there's not like a gaslighting because it does feel that way for, for me personally. I'm dedicated to the work, I have been for seven-plus years. My kid is eight, I've been here almost, when he was like toddling around, right? So I definitely want to be a part of the work and a part of the help, you know what I'm saying? But I, I guess I, I feel ignored, Kathy, or excuse me, President Crawford, I feel ignored. I feel like when I complain, it's, it's not responded to, like I told you, it was 14 days, and I know you've been through a lot. But how do, how do you, because I heard you say that tender resignation piece too, and I'm like, is that towards me? I hope not, because I didn't hear that towards anyone else, right? So, and I'm not going anywhere. I was appointed like everyone else, and I should be treated with respect, just like your statement said. So I guess I'm just curious, how do you support a board member who's asked for help, who gets ignored? I have, you told me you would get back with me, I didn't hear back from you. And now I hear a long speech about how everybody's got stuff, you know? So I guess I'm just curious, how do we move forward?
Well, as I stated, we are going to be in a, further, will we get to the HR report?
Yes.
Then I'll explain further what we are planning to do and how we plan to work together to try to assure that we are going to have collaboration moving forward. So if you'll just stay with us a while, then I think you'll find that we have a lot of work to do, there's no question about it.
Okay.
I can't, I, I don't know what to do about how you feel. I mean, I don't know how to address how you feel. I don't, I, you know, it's just something that we're going to have to discuss, and that might be a good thing for you to do with Dr. Meadows.
Oh, no, I-
Because it's going to be a confidential meeting, one-on-one, with each one of the people, if the board agrees to do it. And I think that that will be something, that will be a great time for you to express your feelings and express what you feel is happening to you.
Well, I think it's good for you as a chair to know, Dr. Meadows is not a part of this board, and he wasn't appointed. And that's my fear that Jay Marks, who seems very impartial and objective, and he's a leader in Oakland County, that's why I'm like, eek, I think he would be great for this, because I've seen him wield both, like, a very objective and fair assessment. I know I did bring up diversity, equity, and inclusion during Dr. Lee Meadows' speech. He said, "Why do you have to bring that up?" That is a quote, okay? And I think somebody videoed that. So I guess, and, and he was very gentle and very kind, but why would I bring that up? Because it's important to me. So I guess I don't have that, that same faith that you do in that situation. This isn't, I'll just say this really quick. It's not just about my feelings, I'm a therapist, I know how to assess those, right? People pay me to do that for them. My issue is not just feelings, especially not just my feelings. My issue is that professionalism is being ignored here. There's things that are happening that are not okay. This isn't about, just like, my feelings got hurt, you know? I've been in business for a long time, right? So sometimes people say things that aren't so nice, or they say it currently or abruptly. I know how to stand up for myself, as you see, I'm doing right now. I'm not intimidated easily, I don't think I'm better than anyone else, or anyone else is better than me, and that's a strength. But I think my issue, President Crawford, is that this is beyond just how I feel. This is about doing the right thing and going by our creed. If we don't follow this, then what happens? You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think so, I think so. So, is that, is that all? Irene, do you have something else? Because I think what you need to understand is, this is our attempt to begin to kind of eliminate some of the conflicts that exist.
Okay.
Okay? So, you know, the other gentleman that you mentioned, I, I was not present at his presentation, I don't know.
I know, it was limited.
And we don't know, we haven't received any offer of assistance from him, we don't, I don't know what kind of recommendations he would make, if that's something that we can do further. But by all means, we'll do it. I mean, I have no problem at all with adding another, we're going to have to continue, continue the training and the work.
Yeah.
Okay?
I agree with that.
Okay.
100%, thank you.
Okay. Um, let's see, where will we, okay, Treasurers' Report. Mr. Treasurer, Jeff?
Okay, the financial report for August 2021, the approved budget for Fund 268 for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. We have total revenues of $3,244,172 against expenditures of $3,409,700. That's a net negative of $165,528, which would be consumed out of the Fund 268. The approved budget for Fund 269 for the same fiscal year has total revenues of $47,500 against expenditures of $58,400. That's a net negative of $10,900, which would be consumed out of the Fund 269. Revenue and expenditure report for Fund 268, as of year-to-date, August 31st, we had total revenues so far of $3,203,941 against expenditures of $458,642. Revenue and expenditure report for Fund 269, as of August 31st, 2021, we had total revenues of $2,300 against expenditures of $11,249, for a negative of $8,949. Balance, ending fund balance for Fund 268, as of August 31st, is $5,239,711. The ending fund balance for Fund 269 is $1,719,455. That concludes, any questions? Comments?
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Jeff, thank you very much. All right, we have come to our second public comment. Pardon?
Director's Report.
Uh, I did this last time, too.
It's not a worry.
I don't know. I should circle it, I'm sorry, the Director's Report, I was going to move right on, but by all means, Director Farkas, please give us the Director's Report.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Page 46, I'm just going to call out our staff anniversaries that we'll be celebrating in October. Barbara Kowski, our, from Information Technology, she's actually the head of our IT department, 24 years, she'll be celebrating. Pat Ameriscondry, Support Services, one of our clerks, and she's celebrating 19 years. Kit Ming Tang, Support Services, one of our shovers, celebrating 13 years. Kristen Abbott, Support Services, one of our tech, tech support for, for tech services, and out of Support Services, 13 years, she's celebrating. Linda Bruin, Information Services, one of our librarians, 13 years. Steve Pelizi, Information Services, he's a sub and has been with us subbing for nine years. And Latanya Phillips, Information Services, one of our subs, and, oh, I, I apologize, that should not be nine years, that is two years. My mistake, and that's two years that Latanya has been with us. Below, I just wanted to call out that we had a wonderful article that was presented in the Novi Today magazine about our self-service and library kiosk. I'm sorry, not Novi Today, but Novi Note, this is a new newspaper that's in the community now, and they reached out to us for an article. There was a typo, so that I, I do want to make sure that it's, it's clarified. This is Marcia David, not Davis, so wonderful supporter of our library, and actually, she was the one who sent me the photo in a thank you for what we're doing out there at Lakeshore Park. But a great opportunity to put an article together with the new paper, so I appreciate that, that opportunity. Page 48, just wanted to share, we had a fallback to business this week. Great opportunity to connect with our small businesses in Novi, and that was in partnership with the Chamber in the City of Novi. We held it at the library, it was great to see people in the building, and we had a great morning. About 70 people were in attendance for this. And then we're getting ready to have our breakfast that we've always done annually for our media specialists and our principals and superintendents of the school districts that we work with, so we've put out our invitations, and we are looking forward to that breakfast on October 11th. Making note of that. A lot of great statistics and reports coming in from my different departments and different managers. If there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain anything at this time and the statistics as well that were provided to you, along with the Friends of the Library and the Historical Commission reports. Thank you.
Okay, next meeting, I will not do that, I won't pass you up, I promise you.
I'm not offended.
If it wasn't for Trustee Mishner, I think you, I think you helped me last time, too, but, oh, well, you know, that's the way it goes.
Thank you.
And now it's time for our second public comment. So in order to hear all citizen comments in a timely fashion, that reasonable hour, too, the Library Board requests that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-and-answer session, however, it's an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the Library Board. I will remind the audience that remarks should be limited to those pertaining to the board business and inappropriate, profane, vulgar, or abusive language and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Citizens must state their first, last name and address. So is there anyone wish to address? Okay, would you please give us your name?
Hi, I'm Sharon Trumpy, sorry for my late arrival, I'm sure you were all super relieved that I got here in time for the second comment section. One of the stated reasons for canceling the listening session response was that all library board trustees should be able to respond to the community concerns. In reviewing the written board responses in tonight's packet, it is striking that there are only responses from four of the seven trustees, despite three months having passed since the community listening session. Most notably, there are zero comments from DEI Chair Sherakuri.
Ms. Trumpy, could, could I, I hate to interrupt you, but could you move closer to the microphone?
This one?
Yes.
Okay, could you restart my timer and I can start over for you?
Start again, then.
Okay. Do you want my mask off, does that help?
It is helpful, thank you.
Excellent, okay.
Thank you.
One of the stated reasons for canceling the library session, listening session response was that all library board trustees should be able to respond to the community concerns. In reviewing the written board responses in tonight's packet, it is striking that there are only responses from four of the seven trustees, despite three months having passed since the community listening session. Most notably, there are zero comments from DEI Chair Sherakuri. I thank the other DEI committee members, Trustee Dooley and Trustee Mishner, for taking the time to listen and to respond to your community. I also appreciated that you submitted your comments within the promised timeframe for a presentation at the July board meeting. Next, I spent the last library board meeting perplexed by the apparent misunderstanding about what is meant by, "How much does it cost to pay employees for a holiday?" The answer I am seeking, and that I heard Trustees Mishner and Dooley repeatedly ask, is, "What is the dollar amount paid to employees for one day of holiday pay?" For instance, I assume the Finance Committee should easily be able to determine how much the library pays out to employees for the paid Fourth of July holiday. This, it appears to me, would also be the dollar amount paid to employees if Juneteenth was approved as a paid holiday with no other changes to PTO or floating holidays. In the parking lot after the August meeting, Mr. Sherakuri told me that I should figure that out myself. As I do not serve on the Library Finance Committee, I would respectfully suggest that the Finance Committee should provide this answer. I also see in tonight's packet that pages 95 to 103 are devoted to a community petition signed by more than 270 individuals requesting the removal of Shreeni Sherakuri as DEI Chair in light of his offensive social media posts. I hope that President Crawford and Mayor Gatt will not ignore the community's voice. As far as President Crawford's comments this evening, that she doesn't know how to deal with Trustee Mishner's feelings, my first suggestion would be that you respond to Trustee Mishner's formal complaint and not permit committee chairs to mistreat or verbally accost their committee members without repercussions. Finally, I noted that item 11 from the listening session is in regards to opportunity for a public comment at the library board meeting. I would like to suggest that the library board consider a format similar to the local school boards in which there is an opportunity related to agenda items prior to board action, and a second opportunity for a public comment at any, on any topic at the very end of the meeting. The school board meetings are livestreamed, and if you review the board of ed minutes, you will see that documentation is limited to the number of comments made and the broad topics addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Anyone else wish to come forward? Okay. Moving along then to committee reports, and I will ask the chairman of the committees if they have any additional things to report.
I actually have one for events and marketing.
Great.
So I did want to put on record a correction for the trustee events attended. The recent staff and some trustees were able to attend a rescheduling to our nearby temple. And I was unfortunately not able to attend the rescheduling, but I wanted to make sure that it was on record that Trustee Bartlett, Trustee you, and Trustee Sherakuri were there with staff, so thank you for being there. And I attended the Hispanic Heritage Recognition Program, so I wanted to make sure to note that as well. But those were my only changes in my report.
Okay, anyone else? Do, I want to hear from the chairman first of committees.
Oh, no, no, no.
Did you want to comment on hers?
Yes, please.
Okay, sure.
So, and, and you can give me feedback on how to do this in the future. So I'm going to attend the book talk, I'm registered for it, I'm reading the book by Dr. Matthews,
the Parent-to-Parent, but it hasn't happened yet, so I'm like, I don't want to say, you know what I'm saying?
I know.
I don't want to say I attend it when it hasn't even happened, Tara, it's the future, what's happening?
I love that question, thank you for asking that question. So I think what I'm trying to do for myself, and this might be something you want to do, is from today's meeting forward to the next meeting, when we do a call for events, just let me know then.
Okay.
And then I can include it in the packet, because I'm in the same boat sometimes, too, so. Yeah, just going forward, if that's something you can do when I put the call out for events, just let me know.
Planning on attending the Parent-to-Parent, and that probably gives it a little shout-out to those that are here, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, yeah, no problem.
Okay, I do want to report on the HR committee meeting we met. We met together and all members were present. It was a very productive board meeting, and it was held on the 20th. All members present. Discussion took place regarding the background of paid holidays and how they are initiated. And it was, are they initiated by city policy, by national and state policies, by other libraries with demographics similar to ours? Is it public demand, board initiatives? The Juneteenth paid holiday issue has some members concerned about adding additional costs in the budget until actual costs of recent budget impacts have been determined. Concerns centered around staff input and the number of numerous uncertain costs that the library is currently experiencing, such as ongoing expenses related to the COVID protocols, storm damage, which is expected to exceed $100,000, and we do not know at this point in time if that, if any of that, or if all of it, will be covered by our insurance. There's a new expenditure- There's a new expenditure related to phone systems. Employees who qualify for paid holidays is the other question thing, the other thing that was questioned in the discussion. And the fine free cost is another sort of uncertainty at this time. These expenditures are currently being addressed in the Finance Committee. Until these expenditures are finally determined, we couldn't make a recommendation to the Board regarding Juneteenth. In addition, it was determined that the Board's DEI Committee should be paused for a time to be decided in the future. The DEI initiatives have been and will continue to be conducted by the Employee DEI Committee under the direction of Director Farkas with Board oversight. And there are no other committee reports.
I have a question through the chair, please. So are you, this is the first I'm hearing of this, are you saying that there's no DEI Committee for the Board anymore? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I'm not saying we're eliminating the DEI Committee. No, what I'm saying is we are pausing the Committee till we have more time, more information and everything, and we are going to put a pause on the DEI Committee. And the employees who are actually doing the DEI work will continue, just as they have in the past, in providing recommendations and working on projects and programs. And until such time as we begin meeting the DEI Committee meeting again.
Can you give me some more? Because this is the first I'm hearing of it, and I'm on that committee, I actually was the founding chair, so I guess I'm, I feel like I'm blindsided. So if you could help me to understand why you would stop that important work from the Board perspective, since we govern.
Well, we didn't stop important work.
You said pause, pause, stop.
Pause, we're pausing the Committee as such right now, because there's so much conflict on this Committee, that we have to, the HR Committee is meeting and discussing ways to move forward. It seems that, you know, once again, we have strong personalities on that Committee, and people, what I'm hearing and what other people are hearing, is that the Committee is unable to move forward, as it stands right now. The Committee is unable to make any progress because of the bickering, to tell you the truth. I mean, that's what has been reported to me. And so until that time, the, what is going to happen, we're not eliminating the Committee. Our intent is for the Committee to be reinstated, or not reinstated, but the Committee will be doing work. However, for the time being, until the HR Committee discusses this further, we are going to be pausing the DEI Committee, the Board Committee, and the Library Board DEI Committee will continue the work and the projects. Yes?
It's in our bylaws, so I don't know that you can just stop a Committee without Board involvement, or a vote, or discussion.
Well, there's nothing in our bylaws that we can't.
It just seems, if you're saying you're stopping it because of bickering, I can tell you, again, I've been on this board for seven years, and almost every Committee I've been on, and, you know, there's healthy debate. We need to be able to discuss things, we need to be able to talk about things. It feels, it, you know, President Crawford, I, please understand, I'm hearing about this today, so I don't think this was done professionally, okay? So please understand that. It wasn't, I won't say I think. I won't put a disclaimer in. This was not done professionally. I should not be a part of that Committee and find out today that it was stopped at this meeting. So that's one thing, okay? So I had no time to digest that, to prepare myself. That feels like an isolation-based thing, an exclusionary thing. If you and Trustee Dooley decided this without talking to us, that's concerning.
Well, it's the HR Committee, it was the discussion at the HR Committee with everyone there. Trustee Dooley was there, our HR person, our staff person was there, Dooley was there. We discussed this, and it seems, from all of the information that has come to us, from all the people that have been involved with this Committee, and I'm talking about employees, and I'm talking about staff that have been in the Committee meetings and everything, it seems impossible, at this moment, with all the members that are on the Committee right now, to move forward with anything because of the disagreements that exist.
So what criteria are you looking at to open it back up? Please give me some understanding of that.
There's no timeframe at this time. I mean, it's, we're going to be meeting again, the HR Committee is going to be meeting again very shortly.
So, this is a formal complaint about that right now. I think that that is not right. I don't think that a Committee should be dissolved without the people in the Committee knowing about.
It's not dissolved. The Committee is not.
You said you don't know when it's going to start again.
Well, it's not, but that dissolution of the Committee, I mean, stopping the Committee or eliminating the Committee is not what is being said. It is on pause. A lot of our Committees don't meet every month. These Committees don't meet every month. And I'm sure you received the memo, like everybody, or the email, that there would be no meeting next month, or the next meeting was because, I think it was probably Chairman Chira Curry, I think he said that he had another engagement and couldn't do it, or something like that.
Just this week, yeah. I understand if, like, someone can't meet, like, I didn't hear anything from Trustee Wood about policy or bylaw, and we were talking about meeting. I figured if something came up in that route, that happens sometimes, absolutely. But we're not saying we're pausing those Committees. So that's my concern. It also is in the bylaws, and it's a standing Committee. So I do, you know, question this, the pausing, I need a definition of that, because you're saying it's not stopped, but then you're saying it's pausing, you're not giving a date for when it's starting back. Again, I think I should have questions. If I didn't, I think you should be concerned about me.
No problem with questions.
I also think strong personality should not be a retaliatory thing. I think that anybody on this Board probably does have a strong personality, and that's probably why they were selected by the mayor to be on it.
Yes, I agree.
You know, we're passionate.
But if you can't, well, the HR Committee discussed this at length. The fact that we're receiving a petition that one member should be removed, the fact that this problems, and it was even in the narrative in the petition, even indicated that problems have existed on that Committee from its very inception, from its very inception. So there are problems, and we need to get more information, and we are going to pause the next meeting, right now, we're going to pause it until we can discuss it further.
Yeah, I'm really disappointed. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, okay. Oh, sorry, did I see?
I want to provide some clarification for Trustee Michener, too. So, the Boards, and for transparency to the public, the Boards are at the pleasure, or the Committees are at the pleasure of the President in our bylaws, and they do determine who's on the Committees and things of that nature. So the HR Committee did not determine the pause. We discussed what was going on. And what, because I'm on the HR Committee, and I'm also on the DEI Committee, it was asked of me what my perspective was in terms of the effectiveness of the trustee board. And what I said was, in the current meetings, as we have them now, there is no effectiveness that's happening with regards to our trustee Committee. I think that there's a communication breakdown in our trustee Committee, definitely outlined by Trustee Michener when she vetted and recorded her letter at the last meeting. And, you know, in order for us to move forward with DI initiatives, especially as a trustee Board, if we're going to have any influence in conversations and guidance, because Trustee Michener is an expert on DEI work. But the thing is, is the public has to know that when we meet as a Committee, there really is no work getting done right now. And that's a shame, and everybody needs to know this. So it's kind of on the President's, you know, table, in terms of what she is now deciding to do moving forward with it. But, you know, being a member of the DI Committee from also its inception, it really is upsetting to me to have to attend these meetings and not see any work getting done. But what I would like to say to the public is, is that from the inception of the Committee that Trustee Michener brought to the table, and that I also had a hand in making it standing, there is a lot of work that has been progressing at a very slow pace, and I know it's not as quick as a lot of people would like it to be, including myself. But I have seen a lot of progress, and a lot of that has come from the staff. The Board, not so much. The Board, not so much. The public needs to know this, that has to be on the record, that it's actually the Board that has a lot of these issues. It is not the staff. The staff is working very hard to progress in an environment to really push equity and inclusion along the finish line, and that's, that's something that I had to put on the record today and impart. But our Committee, unfortunately, as it stands now, it's not just passionate people, because Trustee Michener knows I'm also a passionate person, but I am also someone that tends to hang back and listen as well. It's just not, the work is not getting done in our Committee. It is not getting done in its current form. And there needs to be some massive work internally together in order to rectify this, because this is really important, and I don't want this to go away. But I'm just really sad with how things are going right now. So, you know, Trustee Crawford, President Crawford, made that decision, that was not a CAT decision, that was not a Trustee Dooley decision.
So it was an HR Committee?
It was not HR Committee.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I wanted to clarify that. But because I'm on DEI, and now I'm on HR, we really had to talk about that, because I was being asked some, you know, specific questions. And, you know, I want the Board to move forward, I want the work to get done, especially for DEI, because that is really important to me. And I know it's very important to the staff, and Trustee Michener especially. But we have some, we have some heavy work to do, we have some heavy lifting to do. If we're calling in a consultant for it, I absolutely welcome it, 100%. We really need this, because it's just not working right now. Yes.
Yeah, and I think that, I appreciate that clarification, and also you noting that that was not your decision. I think, from my perspective, I also have worked very hard. I run a business, I am an author, a trainer, a mediator, I do a lot of work. But this library has gotten a lot out of me from DEI work. So I want to put that on the record, that it's not just the staff, they've done incredible. I'm a part of the September Library Card Sign-Up Month event, I've been putting that all over my Facebook. That's not us, that's the staff, great job on that. I'm excited about the Marley Diaz stuff going on, FYI. But I will say, I've poured my heart into this. I've done research, I've, you know, did all the work with the listening session, and then that was, that was taken away from me by our President. So we didn't even get to finish that out. And all the work I'm doing in DEI outside of this library, listening sessions are the top thing. I don't bring it up, other groups are bringing it up. When I, when I had to search out firms, all of them said, "We do community listening sessions," and I thought, well, gosh, I guess we're on the right track. But then we didn't finish out ours. We're very performative, unfortunately, from a Board perspective, and it's clear. And I just, you know, I, again, I'm taking this in now, so you're hearing a lot from me, because I didn't get the pleasure or the opportunity to be able to talk or get an email about it being paused. So I'm taking that in as we speak, but I think it's a disservice for the Board not to have a DEI Committee, and it just is one more thing that's taken away, it's so sad. Like, in June of 2020, we came up with this because we realized that we can make a difference in this way. Are there going to be bumps with DEI? Look around, absolutely. Look around our country, our world, our city, our schools. People are trying to take books away, absolutely, censorship, all kinds of things. So this being taken away is very curious to me and concerning.
Well, let me just be clear, we're not taking anything away. We are not taking anything away. The Committee exists. It's in our bylaws, the Committee exists. We are just not going to be having a meeting right away, okay? I mean, that's just the fact. It's not, there's not going to be a meeting date set until after we have more discussion and input from the HR Committee. So I guess I could have just not said anything, all right? I couldn't, I could have said, well, we're just not set a date for the next meeting. I could have talked to Chairman Chira Curry and said, well, I just don't, we just can't have any dates for a while. I could have done that. But I feel it's important for everyone to know that there has been so much talk about the dysfunction, I'm going to use the word dysfunction, of the Committee, that we are just going to wait till we have additional training, and we have an HR Committee meeting that can discuss it further.
Yeah, and you know, and I appreciate that you didn't just do that, because that would be poor leadership. I was the President of this Board as well, and I think that it's important to remember that there's seven of us, and we make decisions in most cases together. Obviously, you chair, but, and I know that you have a former legislative role, this is very different than that. So just making, like, these mandates is very interesting, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no more, no further Committee reports? And moving on, there was an update from Director Farkas. Did you want to mention any of the items that was in your update? Yeah, I mean, I just, I noticed that there's been some, you know, the, anything further about the insurance claim, or anything further about the phone system problem or issue?
Sure, in terms of building, a couple things, actually, for that. We did have our visit from our risk control consultant in regard to the damage from the two storms that affected the library. I'm waiting, because it's now gone to underwriters, in order for us to hear more information about the insurance claim and what we will be getting back. We have purchased the equipment, not all the equipment is here, it's slowly arriving. Due to COVID, there are some long lead times for us getting that equipment in. We are running on critical, I'll call it mission critical, in order for us to be providing services. I don't think the community is feeling it or seeing it, but it definitely is internally being felt by the staff and stuff, just knowing what we're trying to do, and band-aid when it comes to some things. But more information as soon as I get it and as we can move forward. We did receive RFPs for our phone system, 16 proposals, actually, and Barbara Kowski will be returning from vacation, and we'll be reviewing those and then moving forward. So we'll be able to bring some more information forward in the next month. And then the parking lot, I want to give a heads-up. First, I want to start with how great our relationship is with the high school, and the city, and the Novi Police Department, because when school started, the first couple days were a little hectic and crazy at the library, in a good way. Our teenagers are coming over, they are using the building, they are, you know, going to the cafe, they are finding places to study. We are, we are seeing students and really utilizing the building for a library and for studying. What's happening, unfortunately, is that we do have parents that are using the library's parking lot to pick up kids. And the library's parking lot is not set up for queuing, like some of the other parking lots are for the school. And so you don't have that easy, you know, pull-up, wait-type queuing. It is an actual parking lot. And so we've shared with our, with our partners, the school and the Police Department, Nicole Carter, the principal, is absolutely wonderful, took an email from me very quickly, as well as Assistant Superintendent for the Building Operations, Greg McIntyre, about the concern about the congestion with the parking. And they have sent out reminders in their e-newsletters and alerting parents that it's not a good idea to use the library's lot as that pickup. We've seen improvements, I want to let you know, which has been great, and I thank them for that. We are doing some regular monitoring of the lot, just because it does get very busy at 2:45 till almost 20 after 3:00, with the constant flow of people coming in and out of the parking lot picking up kids. So we are seeing it, it is overflow into the library's lot. There is a traffic consultant committee, and I've also brought that to their attention, too, to see what we can do. Our Police Department came out to look at it, so they could see the traffic and some of the concerns that they have. So the right people have been alerted. If I can put a call-out to parents, it would be that our lot probably is not, I would not recommend our lot as a pickup lot for the high school students, just because we don't have that queuing capability. But to work in the school lots would be much easier. I know that we're also, though, dealing with some construction with the high school as well, and that's part of, part of the problem, too. So everyone's being very patient, students are being wonderful when they come over, but this is one thing that has come up that I'm just making you aware of, and we are working all together.
Okay, thank you. All right, matters for Library Board action. The first item is remote work policy. So I will entertain a motion, I am assuming everyone has read through that. I will entertain a motion to approve the remote work policy as offered by the Policy Committee.
I approve.
Okay, second? I'll second the motion, or Member Wood? Were you ready to push your button?
I was ready to second, and I wasn't quick enough, but I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
I have a discussion point.
Thank you. So, and I brought this up at the last meeting and just did a little bit more research. I like this policy, we obviously did it in our policy meeting. We were supposed to have one this month, we did not have that, so I was hoping, I was going to bring it up there, but that didn't happen. So I was hope, I was going to bring it up there, but that didn't happen. So what I will point out that concerns me, and I'm wondering if we can play with the language or change this. The employee will allow the library director or delegate to have access to the location for the purposes of assessing safety and security upon reasonable notice. I think my only concern is the, if, I don't know if this can be spelled out better or if there can be like maybe some more specifics there. I don't, I don't even think the bigger issue is the director. I think it's the delegate. You know, someone's working in their home to have someone in their space. And it can be anybody that's delegated. I think that that can sometimes be a concern. So that's, that's what I would like to voice as an issue with the policy. Other than that, everything else I like.
Okay, is there any other, any other discussion? Okay, yes.
Yeah, so trustee Michener, you're on policy committee, correct?
Yeah. We didn't have a meeting this, like I caught that at the last meeting, or the last board meeting?
Yes, you did. You did bring that up.
But we didn't have a policy meeting.
Do we have any examples of other organizations that have a remote work policy from this? Is that kind of how we based it or crafted it? Just because that is something different. I don't think the remote work policy at my work has that specific provision in it. So I'm just kind of wondering if it was based off of anything.
Chairman Wood, did you have anything to add to that? Okay, Director Farkas?
Sorry. So this, you know, first started as a pandemic policy. And then I worked with our attorney, our policy attorney, in order to have it written, HR attorney, in order to have it written for it to be more general in terms of just remote work. I have no problem with striking that if that's where there seems to be a sticky point because I believe we will have really good conversations with the employees in order to ensure that what they have in equipment and their, and their environment and stuff is conducive to providing a work, you know, environment from home. So if, if that's what would be amenable?
I'm smiling. You can't see it, but yes.
I can see, I can see the sparkle in your eyes.
My, I did my laugh snort. That was probably special too.
So the motion though is to entertain a motion to, to, you know, the, the motion is to adopt it as it's written here. So it's been, the motion has been made and seconded.
But he can amend his motion.
Okay. Does anybody want to do that?
Well, I have a question. I have a question. Yeah, the motion maker has to do. I have a question though. Sorry. Julie, so I know that part, you know, we're talking about striking.
It's actually in the work agreement. That's where you're at, right?
It is?
I just want to, I want to clarify where you're finding.
Yes.
Yeah.
Page eighty-two.
Yes, it's in the work agreement. So it's not part of the policy. I just want to make sure that everybody is familiar with that.
Thank you. Was the concern mostly stemming from, because we're, you know, considered a public entity? Was it like private records versus public records? Was that the concern by the, the attorney, the policy attorney? Just because that, that is something that gets brought up with public entities sometimes. And I was just wondering if that was the context.
In terms of trustee Michener's question?
Yeah. Like in terms of you or a delegate being able to have access to a private residence?
I think it was just to make sure that the space itself was conducive. So I'm seeing it as too totally, yours, I would like that because we want to make sure files and things, you know what I mean? I wouldn't want to strike that. I think it's just more a concern of just the space itself.
Oh, like OSHA?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's what I want to make sure.
Other discussion? Chairman Chira Curry? And trustee?
Yeah, I want to clarify. Sorry. Could I ask you something for the director?
Sure.
So, so in this paragraph, safety and security is more OSHA world than IT world?
If you're looking at the last paragraph on page eighty-two, I would understand that as the work environment that, that you're working in, you know? Do you have a desk? Do you have, you know what I mean, your space? Is it going to be workable for a remote location, physical? So what I'm understanding is, I would keep the first sentence, "The employee will maintain a safe and secure work environment at all times." I don't think we should take that out. I think you should keep that. But you're, I think what I'm understanding is, is that you'd want the rest. "The employee will allow the library director or delegate to have access to the remote working location for purposes of assessing safety and security upon reasonable notice." "The employee will report work." You want, you want to keep the last sentence.
Yeah, I will leave the last sentence.
So I believe it's only the middle sentence that you want to strike.
You got it.
Okay.
Yep, one hundred percent.
And I am, I am amenable to that.
Thank you. Thanks, Julie.
Okay, we have a motion.
Trustee Chira Curry.
So then I would have to withdraw my motion to pass as is?
Correct. Or take a friendly amendment. Right?
You can amend your motion. You can approve it with striking that sentence.
So technically, Robert Trump's order.
Yes.
Once the motion was seconded and it was given to the floor, it's now a floor motion. So you can't just amend it, but the board can amend it. So if everyone is agreeable to the amendment, you would first vote on the amendment and then you will vote on the actual motion.
So we do need a trustee to call up the amendment though, right?
Well, and, and the trustee who made the actual motion can call up the amendment.
Okay.
But you would all have to agree to amend it before you vote on it.
Okay, thank you.
And technically, can any trustee make that amendment right now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so.
So trustee Michener, since I don't want to.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
It looks like you got it marked up already, right?
I did mark it up, yes. No worries. Thank you. Yeah, so, and you can tell me if I'm doing this correctly. So I would like to accept that motion with the amended piece of striking, "The employee will allow the library director or delegate to have access to the remote working location for purposes of assessing safety and security upon reasonable notice."
Second.
A second? All right. Member Wood, seconded that motion. So now we're voting on the amendment. All right, so everyone's clear. Discussion?
I actually need more. I, I would like to provide some clarity. You really are, you're, you're voting on the policy. This agreement, I, I'm amenable to your change, but you're not voting on the agreement. You are voting on the policy.
The agreement is the contract.
Yes. But I, I welcome your suggestions and I do agree with them, but you are doing the policy. Okay.
Do we need to add that word? I mean, do we need to say?
I've taken what you need from this agreement to be changed. I welcome the changes. But you are voting on this policy.
Okay. So I, I do want that noted.
Agreement is separate. I should be able to amend and change that agreement if we need to. You are voting on the policy.
So I would like to, so from my perspective as a trustee, I think the, and, and this is what I understood from our meeting that we did have when we looked this over. I thought the agreement was a part of the policy as well.
No, it's not.
Oh, no, I just wanted to finish. And I'm sharing what I thought as well. And I do think that that should be voted on. I've noticed when I don't have something voted on, when I feel like it should, things shift and change. So I definitely want to make sure that that part is voted on. I think that's really important.
All right, will you clarify your motion again?
I can, thank you. So what I'm asking is accepting the policy, and I'll say the work agreement, with the striking of, "The employee will allow the library director or delegate to have access to the remote working location for purposes of assessing safety and security upon reasonable notice." So I would like to have that included.
Can I offer just a tweak to that? A recommendation that that be stricken from the application? As opposed to approving the actual application? And I think trustee Farkas has a good point. If you actually approve. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
If you actually approve the application, then she'll have to come back for any changes to the application, no matter how minor. So if we leave it as a recommendation that it's removed, you're still just adapting the policies with that recommendation.
Yeah, and I think the biggest, that's why I appreciate that. I think the biggest thing that I'm trying to put across is that I don't agree with the, the stricken, the language that I want to strike. I, I think it's wrong. So I, I think what I'm trying to say is like, I, I would like to use my voice as a trustee to say that I think that that should not be a part of the remote work agreement. That part, "The employee will allow the library director or delegate to have access to the remote working location for purposes of assessing safety and security upon reasonable notice." That specific part. So it's listed as remote work agreement, not application. I just want to note that. But that is what I have a concern with, and that's what I'd like to use my voice to say today.
Trustee Wood?
Can I ask a question? I know you said recommendation, but if, if trustee Michener made the, the, if the motion was set that the remote work agreement cannot have that sentence in there, then that still gives the flexibility, correct?
It does, yes.
So if we make it very clear, we want that sentence removed.
Correct.
That's all we have to do, gives the flexibility.
Yes, thank you.
And, and, but I agree with everything trustee Michener says here.
Thank you.
Okay, we all clear what we're voting on?
Yeah, do we have it in record?
You're voting on the policy.
Okay. But trustee Michener had very specific verbiage.
Policy, well, we should vote on the policy and then we should vote on the remote work agreement and excluding that sentence. So there should be two things.
No. Because if you do that, then I, again, you're going to lock it in.
No, 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 no. That's why I just asked. We're saying we will vote separately. The remote work agreement cannot have that sentence in there. It gives you the flexibility, everything around it, but it just can't have that sentence in there.
I agree with trustee Wood.
Anywhere.
But, but you can do that as one motion.
Correct. Oh, we want to do one big motion?
I just want to make sure that's not lost, that that agreement piece is in there.
I fully understand.
I think that the bookkeeper is, oh, yeah, right.
Yeah.
And, and we would like to restate motions so that we make sure that we get them put back in again into minutes. We, we've found that that's.
I think it's easier making two separate motions. That's okay.
I agree.
I mean, we have the one motion to approve the policy. Let's do that. The second motion that trustee Michener has. If that's okay with everyone else.
I think I'm following you, Jen.
Okay. Okay, so the motion that we're voting on now is trustee Chira Curry's motion? Is that correct? First, because you want to vote in two, right?
Except that it was never amended to just adopt the policy.
Correct. Correct.
And you're going to amend it, correct?
So I'm now, okay, so I'm, I would like to amend my motion to accept the remote work policy and to also ensure that in future use of the remote work agreement, the sentence allowing the director to delegate, send a delegate, or require a delegate to have access to the employee's remote working environment, that language will not be in any future remote work agreement.
Correct.
Okay. The seconder, agree?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion about this? All right. All right.
Okay, I have to do the, the vote, right?
Yes. Trustee Dooley, please call a roll.
I'm going to have to rewrite this.
Yes.
Trustee Chira Curry?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley, I vote yes. Trustee Michener?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Now, we're going to do another motion? Is that correct? No, or we're done?
That took care of everything.
This took care of everything. Okay.
Motion passes. Keep forgetting to say that.
I'm sure the others will go a lot faster, right?
Trustee Dooley, can you, can you say the motion and what it passed by, please?
Yes, sorry about that. I've been bad about that. I apologize. The motion, am I restating the motion?
No, you're not. You're just giving the, what your final vote was.
Okay. Motion passes unanimous.
And, and that was?
That was five, five trustees.
Five, zero.
Yeah, five, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not used to saying that. Thank you.
Okay, you're doing fine. All right, number two. The record retention policy is a new policy, and I will entertain a motion to approve the record retention policy as offered by the policy committee. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the record retention policy.
Trustee Wood, and a second. Trustee Michener? Okay. We have a motion and a second, and now discussion. Seeing none. Trustee Dooley, please call a roll.
Trustee Dooley, I vote yes. Trustee Michener?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Chira Curry?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
Okay. Number three. Guest behavior policy. And this is admitting the smoking policy as a separate policy and adding language to the guest behavior policy. I'll entertain a motion to approve the guest behavior policy as offered by the policy committee.
Just had a point of clarification?
We'll discuss after we get motion.
I'll motion to approve.
Okay. And second? I'll second the motion. Okay, now discussion.
I apologize for not knowing this, but does this mean there is currently a smoking policy that we're eliminating, a separate smoking policy?
We had a separate, we're now bringing it into the guest behavior policy just to make it easier and to clarify.
And so that old, old.
So the, yes, so the public smoking policy will go away. The language which has been beefed up and added more information will be added to this larger guest behavior policy.
Okay, so my concern was, is it, the motion is crafted, is it clear that that other policy is disappearing now?
Yes. It will go away, yes. No use of separate smoking policy if incorporated into guest behavior policy, which I stated on page eighty-six.
No, no use or it's removed from the book, I guess?
We will no longer have a separate smoking policy.
Okay, just.
It will be incorporated into the guest behavior policy.
Okay, that's the clarification I wanted, okay.
If it helps, is it number seven?
Yeah, no, I see that, I didn't understand what no use of separate smoking policy meant, are we physically, we're tearing that page out of the book, right?
Yes, we are, yes, there's no longer a separate policy. I'd also like to just, a couple, a couple tiny little things in that paragraph of number seven. We're going to, the, the red that says City of Novi Ordinance, it should say Chapter Twenty-two, then Article V, which is five, Section Twenty-two to One-O-One, parentheses D, that's going to go after the word library building, okay, at the end of the sentence. So just, just for point of clarification, because it incorporates not only the hundred feet of the library entrance, but within the library building.
Okay.
Okay?
So this isn't anything that needs to alter the, this doesn't alter the motion?
It does not alter the motion, I just want you to be aware of, it will look just a tiny bit different once it's put together.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, Trustee Dooley, please call a roll.
Trustee Michener?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Sher Curry?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
And Trustee Dooley, I vote yes. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, number four, and I will be making the motion. I move that the Novi Library Board engage Dr. Lee Meadows for consulting work based on the June strategic planning session and recommend that the cost not exceed fifteen hundred dollars. I made the motion, is there a second?
I was gonna second it.
Okay. Remember Dooley? All right, discussion.
Yeah, I, I really would like us to consider more than one presenter. Dr. Lee Meadows did come in and speak with us, but Dr. Jay Marks has been involved with the library for over seven years, maybe longer, but since I've been here, and not just the library, the city and Oakland County. He's amazing in his work. He's spoken for some of Gail's programs that she's hosted, as well as the last big event for the in-service, and, and some of us weren't there because there was a limit of how many trustees could be there. We would've been there if we could've, right? So I, I would just say, like, I would like us to, to kinda consider at least more than one candidate, for fairness, especially since we're having, as you mentioned, DEI has a lot of problems. I think one person just being given to us isn't as fair, if we're gonna, you know.
Well, this is a beginning. This is a beginning. And Dr. Meadows is able to conduct one-on-one interviews, he has agreed to it, and he can do it in early October, and he can provide these confidential interviews in early October, both in person and on Zoom, if we wish. He has a good sense of what he noted in the strategic planning session that we had, he has a good eye, good sense of what's happening here. He would plan to put together his findings and provide his thoughts to the full board at the Wednesday, November sixteenth Public Board meeting with a thirty-minute presentation along with additional recommendations. Director Farkas believes that this cost can easily be covered in the current professional services budget, number eight sixteen, eight hundred sixteen. Any further discussion?
Well, and, and you came in while I was still talking, which is fine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it was okay, you added good clarification, but I wanted to be able to finish what I was saying, if that makes sense.
Okay, sorry.
No need to apologize, I think it was added clarification, I didn't feel like you interrupted me, but I, I didn't wanna lose my chance to continue talking, does that make sense? And I do wanna follow the rules. So what I'm asking is at least, usually when we get a motion, just like with policy, we have a month to think about it. And I would definitely say that this is something I think needs some time to think about, and, and I offer my thoughts on, on Jay Marks that I think should still be considered, but I would like to at least have a month to think about it, I don't wanna vote on it today.
Okay. I think because of the crisis that exists with this committee, that we need to move forward. I mean, that is my feeling. Member Wood, did you have?
Yeah, I do, I wanna echo Trustee Michener. I think we've, in the past, we've rushed to have things added at the last second, and people have been pressured to vote on them. I would like to also, you know, have this tabled until next month.
Okay. Okay, all right. Remember Dooley?
Yes, so, a couple things. I, I was one of the trustees that did attend the in-service with staff with Dr. Jay Marks, and Trustee Michener is absolutely correct, he's phenomenal with regards to his education in the DEI space. I too, since last year, have been doing a lot of learning, a lot of it from Trustee Michener, but a lot of it I've been learning on my own because it's my responsibility to do that work. And that was a huge benefit that I hope, maybe in the future, the trustees, the board could consider doing something similar to the OMA with Trustee Marks. I think that could be pretty interesting. I did hear talks that day that the staff really loved what they learned and they would, you know, love to be able to have him come back for another in-service. And there's a lot of amazing things that the staff's actually working on right now in terms of a whole series of training for themselves. And when Dr. Meadows was here for our strategic planning, I did wanna plant the seeds that we also need constant training as a board, especially with regards to conversations such as this. I did see Dr. Meadows in a different occasion after our strategic planning session. He was leading DEI training for a local Rotary Club in Southfield, and what he was teaching that specific day, because our, our day of training wasn't really centered around DEI when we were meeting as a board, but his specific training that night was amazing. And I do think that, you know, if we're gonna be doing consultant work with him on a one-to-one basis, I'm, I'm super excited about that, to actually be able to, to talk with him and to learn more from him, because I, I really think that a lot of, a lot of awful behavior has occurred as members of this trust, of this board, and a lot of hurt has happened. And I'm somebody that really wants to work towards the healing, because this work is really important. And if, if we can figure out a way to get there, that's what I'd really ask of the board tonight. But I do understand the concern, because, you know, typically, we kind of review things and noodle on it before we really vote on it. But I just wanted to, you know, make that on the record, that I, I really want this training to happen, and continual training from thought leaders in this space, like from Dr. Marks, and other people in this space, that would be really important for all of us. And that's all.
Okay, anyone else? Well, I mean, I'm certainly willing to, you know, I agree that in the past, some of the problems that we've run into is, would we have a surprise motion or a motion that people haven't had a chance to think about for any length of time, that I agree that you sorta have to mull it over. However, because of the, the critical issues that we've had dealing with the committee, I felt like this should happen soon. I felt like we should move forward with it. So, you know, I certainly respect the other comments about, you know, delaying, because that's usually what we do, we don't, we don't generally vote on a, a motion that comes to the floor the same night. But I would like to move forward myself, so I guess I will, if there's no other discussion, yes.
Can I just have a point of clarification, just for myself, in, in trying to address all of you and, and to work to the benefit of you? This was a springboard from your strategic planning in order to do this. I would then look from the actual board for what kind of guidance, when I reach out to Dr. Marks, for how you would want me to present this, because Dr. Meadows has, has had an opportunity to meet with you and has gotten a sense of the board at this point and, and some information and has spent some time with you, which is why his presentation and, and the recommendation was as-is. I guess I'll need some further clarification in order for me to get you a quote and provide you that from Dr. Marks's background, knowing that it's not the same in terms of apples and apples, if that, if that's clear, or at least clear for me. Thank you.
I do have a question, Julie. Correct me if I'm wrong, but was this information from Dr. Meadows, was this in a previous packet?
It was in the July one, yes.
It wasn't, okay, that was the meeting I wasn't at.
Right, and when, because President Crawford wasn't here in August, it was asked to be brought back so that she could go back to when it was first presented for all of you, because it was, bring it for July, have a discussion in it, and we didn't.
I did forget about that, okay, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other discussion?
I think just to answer the point of clarification from my perspective that Director Farkas mentioned, I think Dr. Jay Marks has showed his work, like, over seven years at this library and throughout the county. We've, we've hired him for several things, not just the last in-service, so I think he has also had some time with the staff as well as some members of the board. But I do think, you know, I hear your point, and I think, I, I wonder if that's an opportunity for us to maybe hear his thoughts on what he would do. And, and here's where I'm coming from, I just got finished with a global search for a DEI firm, we have five firms for a corporation, and we interviewed each of them, asked them questions, and it was really done fair, and we ended up finding an amazing firm. I think just having one option isn't very diverse, no pun intended. So I think having at least two options to choose from is really good. Dr. Meadows is very warm, he's very educated, please don't think I'm taking anything away from him.
I have no stake in this.
I do think that Dr. Jay Marks also brings a lot to the table as well, so I think we have these two leaders, why not have two to choose from at least? And then, you know, we can, we can pose questions, you know, that's a possibility, and I'm happy to help. Or we can see if they come up with a proposal, because with the, with the search that I just did with another company, they brought, they, they did their own research of our company, and then they came to us with what their thoughts were. So, so I think that, you know, that it's an opportunity for somebody else to at least get their, ring in the hat, hat in the ring, I always mess that one up.
Well, is, is that it, or, or do you have something else? No, I'm just, I don't wanna interrupt you again.
No, it's okay, you didn't interrupt me, you're fine.
All right. I guess the, there's certainly, this is not gonna stop, Dr. Meadows is the beginning. I mean, it's not really gonna be just necessarily one person, certainly the board can, can direct what other, what other kind of speaker they would like to have or additional training. I think we need, we need, as Member Dooley said, I think that we do need continuous training and education and information, it's an ongoing thing. This is not an end-all, this, this beginning is not the end, okay? This is just the beginning. I don't, I don't think you're suggesting that we have both of these people come at the same time, are you, or?
No, I'm saying we should have a choice, at least, instead of just one person, I think we can weigh and then actually, and if anyone else has, has any other, I said Dr. Marks, you know, as a suggestion, just 'cause I know he's worked with us, but if there's other people out there as well that are in this space, that's not a bad thing either. That was one of the things originally our DEI committee was supposed to actually do, that we never did. So, so I'm very passionate about this, but I think having at least more than one option is a really good idea.
Okay. Yes, Member Dooley?
Through the chair, would you, President Crawford, would you be amenable to maybe amending the motion or rewording the motion, 'cause I really wanna move forward with training? Maybe if we can word it in such a way where the next stage is to get the proposals that don't exceed more than fifteen hundred dollars or something like that? I just really want to see action taken to move forward. So instead of us voting on a specific person, could we vote on the actual action taking place, that we will be getting proposals that won't exceed the amount that you said, so that in October we can actually vote on the correct facilitator, maybe? Would you be amenable to that? I mean, I, I feel like we need to keep moving forward, I don't want it to stall.
Well, I'm willing to withdraw the motion, and you can make a new motion, I'm willing to withdraw, and if the secondor is willing to agree, I'll withdraw the motion, and you can make a new motion.
Oh, yeah, I second it, so I, I agree with you.
Make a new motion.
Okay. So I'd like to.
Can I?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna need some clarification, again, sorry. Because the proposal you have is from one person.
Right.
And it's one person's thoughts to you and recommendations. So, to move forward and, and to reach out to Dr. Marks, are you gonna look for something similar, which is Mr. Meadows' ideas? Or are you gonna be looking for me just to bring a proposal back of whatever he feels is important and, and to target and to bring forth to you as a board to work with you? I'm just looking for some clarification now, since.
Yeah, I think I answered that earlier. So I was basically saying that in some cases, he's already worked with us, so he knows what we look like, so even if with the staff, with, with the staff in service, and also, like, maybe he'll do some research himself and maybe bring something to the table, and, and I'm asking for Dr. Jay Marks, but I like what Trustee Dooley said, that, you know, other proposals in general, who knows if there's other facilitators out there that also can look at the company and then, or the organization, and then give their thoughts?
To me, that's a bigger.
I'm not saying that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm not saying that he copies of Dr. Meadows.
Well, I don't wanna do that.
Yeah, that's not what I'm suggesting at all, I wanna be really clear. Whatever, and, and this is why I'm being clear, when that, when there's usually a DEI search, there's usually more, a search.
There's an RFP.
There's not just.
If you want a bigger, that's what I'm, I'm trying to get to, at this point, I'm hearing we're probably going out for something bigger, and I'll be looking for guidelines really to go out and do it with us.
I'm not saying bigger, please, no, 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 I'm not saying bigger, I'm saying, I know Dr. Jay Marks has also worked for us, so that was a thought that I had. But if someone else had a suggestion, that's fine, too. But typically, it's, it's open to say, what would you see for our organization? What would you see for our organization? And then we have something to choose from. I don't wanna pause the work either, I just don't wanna just go with one person without considering another. I think, again, diversity means diversity, not just one person or perspective. I think that's really important.
I understand. Lisa?
If I may offer a suggestion?
Yes, please.
It doesn't sound like you need a motion at this point. If the motion has been withdrawn and the direction is to get additional bids, I don't think there's any point to a motion.
Okay. What, what I would like to know, though, is if, I mean, is two gonna be enough, or should, should, is somebody going to, I mean, should we go look at a variety of DEI presentors? I mean, and then.
To me, this sounds bigger, so that's why I wanted to get clarification.
Come to the next meeting, prepare to vote on which one you want, I mean, I guess I don't really understand either, I, I wanna work for, move forward. I agree that if you want additional people to chime in, you know, or you want, you want a choice, is what I'm hearing, right?
A choice, and I don't, I don't agree that we should remove the motion, I don't agree with that, I think we should have a motion to make sure the work happens, I think that would be a disservice to everybody. I think the work should happen, I like that you have a plan, we need a plan, it's very clear. So to take that off the table in general, I think would be a bad idea. I think it's just the selection process of, like, can we have more than one? Maybe, maybe we shoot out for that and we still only have Dr. Meadows, then we vote on Dr. Meadows, if that's all we have, I'm just saying.
Well, my motion was really just to continue with Dr. Meadows, at least as a beginning step. So I'm withdrawing the motion because it sounds like, you know, there's interest in having additional people. If that's the case, then we need a new motion.
Yep, I understood that, and I, I, I'm happy to do that, or Trustee Dooley, or?
Yeah, just before, I would like to make the motion, but before I do that, I wanna make sure for staff clarification. When I do make the motion, and, you know, Trustee Michener or any of the other trustees can chime in on this, when I do make the motion, do we wanna put a cap on the RFP or the request to bid? Just because I don't want to put even more work on staff to get us the proposals, because they're actually inundated. So I wanna figure that out together tonight to make sure that my motion is very specific.
Okay, Member Chair Curry? I see your hand was up first.
Two things, I, I think putting a cap since we had a prior pledge, it helps, if we don't have a detailed scope of work, it helps them propose correctly the level of effort we're looking for. But I had a question for Director Farkas, when you, when this first came up, you mentioned this in the context of strategic plan?
Correct, in the meeting that you had, didn't you?
Deliverable of this dependent strategic plan? And would somebody who hasn't done that prior thing be capable of delivering the same thing you need in this, for those who know this?
So, when, when we engaged Dr. Meadow, or, yes, Dr. Meadows in June, I believe there was an understanding that there would be goal work, and then there would be a recommendation from him as to how to move forward with him working with you. That's why he gave you the recommendation and some other information in order to provide that and some guidance to all of you. So, at this point, did I answer your question?
I guess is it possible for someone else to give the deliverable that you're anticipating?
Whatever you want.
No, I'm assessing, as you originally intended, not a judgment, but you used that somehow was gonna feed into the strategic plan.
Well, it started with goals for this year for you, it's not necessarily the new strategic plan, it's the current things that we're doing, and the current goals that you're supposed to be setting for yourself for this year. So, that's why I'm saying there was, I feel like there was a seed planted in June to get you guys working and then to move from there. He gave you recommendations on how he might help you do that, and from what he heard from that meeting in June, how to help you with some other things that might be of concern, or, do you know what I mean, or conflict, I should say. So, at this point, what I wanna put out there is, I'm gonna need some guidance from this board then, for what you want written in order to go out and ask for some additional bids or, because I have one, I only have from Dr. Me, from Dr. Meadows, I would look for guidance as to what you're looking for in order for me to put it out, to ask and ask for someone else to give a proposal and to keep to the fifteen hundred, if that's what you're wanting to do, because I'm only working from what was recommended from the event that occurred in June.
Okay. Member Wood?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure from my perspective, I'm not, to me, it's, I don't care if it's multiple people or just one person, I just wanna make sure when we vote on something, it's in the agenda, like, printed, you know, and not brought up that same night. So I don't think we need a motion, we've given Director Farkas direction, you know, and she'll come back potentially with multiple items, but I think, you know, I don't think a motion is necessary, I think that that, again, I wouldn't vote for a motion either. But, to me, it's more important to have it in the board of action, and that's something that even the public will see prior, et cetera.
And then, to clarify again, I will need direction on what you are looking for then as a board, for what you're, in terms of a proposal. 'Cause I, we weren't going out for bids, we weren't doing RFPs, I'm now going to be looking for additional people, and one being recommended, which I look forward to reaching out to him, but I don't know what it is I'm asking him to provide to you at this point. This is coming, Dr. Meadows, from your event in June. So I'm, I am going to need some information from you as to what you want.
Yep, you're right.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I think just a few points of clarification to think about, when you think about, did you guys have a?
I'm gonna take his work, that's, that's my concern.
Did you wanna bring that to all of us?
I'm sorry.
It's okay, I just know it's a public meeting. So I was just gonna say, like, to answer your question, I, I think that clearly we have issues, right? Like, I, I just found out tonight that the, the committee I'm on is not doing anything, it's paused, which it means it's not meeting, it's not working. So clearly we have some issues. I think that in, in my thought process, any professional would probably do some research, ask some questions, look at past board meetings, things of that nature. I know that he already did work for your staff for, like, a whole day. So I said Dr. J Marks only because he knows this library, not only from June, but he knows this library from, like, at least seven years ago when I first got appointed.
Absolutely.
I think he understands us. I think if he had clarifying questions, you know, that he'd probably ask those as well. So if you're saying, what do we need? I think it's clear we need something. And, and it's not, it's not what we're doing currently. So just having two options seems like a very fair process.
Okay.
Are we supposed to do that?
Trustee Dooley?
Yes, I just wanted to give some clarification and direction so that you have it going forward. I think the specific training currently that we need needs to be centered around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we also need a training on how to, I don't want to use Dr. Meadows' language, but basically whoever comes to the table with a proposal needs to understand how this board currently works and communicates, and then come up, comes to us with recommendations on how they want to help us move forward with our training. But the focus, I think, primarily has been a DEI focus because that's been a lot of the tensions that have come through from this board has been in that space. So that would be the direction that I would ask for when you're going out for a proposal. Is, is that specific to things? Does that help?
Are you gonna?
Do I need to put that in, right?
Are you gonna put a cap on the cost?
I mean, it sounds like we had a specific line item budget that was noted at $1,500. Is that what we have?
No, I'm.
That was from Dr. Meadows.
That was just one going off of just a proposal that was received, and, and I got you an estimated cost, just so you had that available.
Thank you, appreciate it. I mean, I don't really know, I think it varies how much the work costs, but if it can not exceed that, that would be great, if we're able to do that. I hope that helps because then, you know, in October, we can actually vote on moving forward with the training.
And so then I'll reach out to both of them again to make sure that we're getting apples to apples. But if there's anybody else that you would be wanting me to reach out to, please let me know if there's other consultants as well.
I thought it's just those two for my recommendation. Thank you.
So if I'm understanding what we're going to do, we're not going to make a motion then? Is that correct? We're not going to, we're going to have a motion? I know you're going to be a no, but if we make a motion. And, and I understand, because I feel the same way about, you know, surprise motions. But if we can just ask, I think, I think what I'm hearing is that the DEI, the DEI issue is the number one priority at this point. Am I correct? Isn't that what you're saying?
I think that's where a lot of the tension of this board stems from.
And Dr. Meadows was involved with the strategic planning, which I think we also need, but he, he was also taking into consideration the DEI issues. So, you know, we already know what he would charge for his consultation or his session. And if we want a choice, then I guess, you know, if you make a motion regarding, you know, whatever you're thinking about DEI, is that what you want to say to another person?
We don't have to make a motion, is my understanding. I was just trying to give clarification for Director Farkas because now she has to make sure that she has the correct apples-to-apples bids, for lack of a better term. So proposals, thank you. I'm so used to saying, yeah. So she needs to get those proposals in front of us so that all of the trustees are informed to make, you know, the best decision possible.
So at the October meeting, the expectation is that we will have several, several people to choose from, is that correct? I mean, is that what you're thinking, everyone? Are we all on the same page?
Well, we've got two. If anybody else has a recommendation, they can let staff know.
Well, we don't really have two. We have one.
Two suggestions, it's all right.
When you normally do this through the city and you put out a request for proposal, you're going to put this out to a larger body.
Okay.
I need more details as to what you're looking for.
Yeah, and.
What you spelled out, I appreciate trustee Dooley, but that's not going to be enough to create an actual RFP in order for me to get it out on the street and have it be effective. And that usually takes four to six weeks in order to do that, that process. So it won't be ready for October. I can tell you that right now. If you want me to just reach out to the two, the one being suggested this evening and go back to the gentleman that's from here, I can do that per your thing. But we've, we've got to go to a whole different process if you want an actual request for proposal.
So this isn't through the city. And, and, you know, I hear the city brought up a lot. We're, our library doesn't have to have the city's amen on this, right? So I think Dr. J Marks has already done work for us numerous times, sending out an email, if you need help with crafting, I can help. I, I throw my, again, hat in the ring, ring in the hat, however you say it. But I think just asking, like, hey, we are considering some diversity consultation. Somebody from the board brought you up. We think highly of you. Do you have a proposal to share? If he says, no, I'm not interested, then obviously we just have one person. So I don't think that it takes six weeks. I mean, I just did a search, and we did that very quickly with major firms across the country.
Well, I just want to make sure the whole board is okay then with me proceeding with reaching out to Dr. J Marks and circling back to Dr. Meadows to make sure both are similar in terms of the information I will be receiving back. You are comfortable with just the two?
Yeah, just having, like, two out, yes.
And if, and if you're not looking for point of clarification, and if you're not comfortable to not make a motion, your motion could simply be to table this discussion to a date certain, and then you can pick the date where it will be discussed again, if that will make people more comfortable.
Okay. I'll motion to table this discussion for our October meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have to do the roll call, hold on.
Okay, well, further discussion?
Just one point of information. Because these are two, two individuals with whom we've already had prior contracts, this won't be seen as abrogating some sort of procurement process that we normally go through. Because in, in both cases, it'd be like a change order on existing work.
No, it's not. This is new work. And so that's why I'm trying to be very.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, so when we go out for new work, what is, what is the rule for the, at what point do we have to go out for public RFP?
Well, if, if it's the larger amount, so it's typically $10,000. You're giving me that cap, and I understand that. Again, though, I'm just looking for the correct language that you'd like so that both can provide the right information back to you. Because again, I'm only working from a recommendation that came in from one of the consultants that has worked with you already in the past. That's, I just want to make sure that what I provide you in October is what you're looking for in order to do a comparison and then make a decision.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I was just going to say what Director Farkas is trying to say, I think, is that this program wasn't initially designed and then asked to get information to come back towards that design or that concept. We were working from, to reiterate, Dr. Meadows' proposal from the, the get-go.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that's on record for you.
Yep, I under.
I hope that was clear.
Okay.
No, and I, and I want to be clear as well. I think that Dr. J Marks has done a lot of work for us. I think that he knows our organization. I think that he spoke recently at an in-service, so. Right, thank you. So I think my question is, and I don't think it's that intense, it's just, can we have another option to choose from and seeing if he has anything to put out? It's quite possible that he could be non-amenable. It's possible that he could be very amenable. But I would like us to at least look for more than one option. I think that's a really good idea.
Okay. So is everyone clear? Any other discussion on this? I believe there's a motion and a second on the floor to have Director Farkas come with, you know, with some information regard, next time, with the priority of DEI, is that correct? I mean, is that sort of what you're thinking? I don't even want to bring anything else.
We're just tabling the discussion. That's all it is. Don't add anything else. We're just tabling the discussion, it's been seconded.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, that's what we're going to do. All right, then. Member Dooley, please call the roll.
Yeah, I have to go. Trustee Sherri Curry?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley, I vote yes. Trustee Mishner?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero.
Okay. Moving right along.